Good evening, welcome to the November 1st, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by the Planning Commission's staff and the applicant via teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through the meeting, this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be by rule call. City Clerk Harper, will you please take role?
Yes, Chair Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Winkler. Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Klinger.
Here.
Commissioner Winkler.
Here.
We have four members present. We have a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda by motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. If we do not have any of these, do we have a motion in a second?
I move that we accept the agenda as it's written.
And I'll put in a second.
City Clerk Harper.
Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas is abstinent. Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote?
Ah, yes.
Motion carries four votes.
Thank you. Public comments, public communications at this time, members of the public may address the commission regarding the items on the planning commission agenda. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to provide comments were asked to send comments via email to the City Clerk or via the comment icon on the city website before 6:00 PM today. Comments provided via email by 6:00 PM will be distributed to the Planning Commission and posted on the city website for review by the public. Email comments received after that time will be posted on the city's website and forwarded to the Planning Commission after the meeting. Any documents for review should be sent to the city clerk prior to the meeting for distribution. Those members of the public wishing to call in can join the Zoom meeting from any electronic device by clicking the following link or by dialing the number. Those members requesting to speak by phone or on Zoom can unmute by entering star six when called upon to speak. Once in the meeting, you will be added to the waiting room until the public comment period begins. At that time, you will be allowed to join the meeting to offer your comments. Commenters who are not applicants will be allotted five minutes to address the commission. The ability to comment will be disabled when your allotted time is expired. City Clerk Harper, do we have any emailed comments?
Yes, six email comments were received. They've been distributed to the commissioners and they will be available on the city's website.
Thank you. And now on to the consent calendar, approval of the October 18th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do we have a motion in a second?
I'm moved. I'll second.
City Clerk Harper, can we take role, please?
Yes, Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries four votes, yes.
Thank you. On to the public hearing, item B, conditionally used permit 21-4 at 255 Seventeenth Street. Is there a report?
Yes, there is. Good evening, Chair Miller and Planning Commissioners, this is Assistant Planner Marco Quas. And tonight's proposal is from Stephen Senikoff, the applicant, who on behalf of the property owners Cameron and Ashley Rados filed an application for condition use permit 21-4 requesting approval to allow for the interior remodel and addition of a second story to an existing single-family residence that is not conforming due to setbacks. Next slide, please. Next one again, please. So the subject site is located on the south west corner of Seventeenth Street and Landing Avenue in the Old Town area and it's developed, currently developed with the single-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. The subject site is located in RHD20 zone and is surrounded by residential uses on all sides. Next slide, please. The subject property is a corner lot and it measures 25 feet wide by 100 feet deep. Based on these dimensions, the development standard requires a north northerly or street-side street-side yard setback of three feet nine inches. The existing northerly side yard setback is currently at three feet. All other setbacks and zoning requirements are co-compliant with this property. The subject property, once again, is not conforming due to its setback along the northerly street side of the property. And according to table 11.2.05.015 of the Seale Beach Municipal Code, the side yard, side yard, street-side setback for corner lots in the RHD20 zone is required to be at least 15% of the lot width. So the applicant is proposing to add a 1,355 square foot second story addition to the residence. The interior remodel proposes to relocate the existing first floor bedrooms and the proposed second floor or onto the second floor in order to accommodate an expanded open layout design for an existing kitchen, dining, and living room areas. As proposed, the home will have a total of four bedrooms and three bathrooms and the new area of construction will be almost entirely covered by the existing structures and would be set back to maintain the required three-foot-nine-inch northerly street-side setback. So the total lot coverage is calculated at 60.64%, which is less than the 75% total that's required in that zone. So the slide in front of you, you can see the existing layout of the home, but you can also see the existing two-car garage to the left, followed by what will be the new second floor addition added to the second, added to the single-family home. Next slide, please. So this gives you the elevation views of the property. So once again, it's going from a single-story residence to a, a two-story residence. And, and once again, the northerly side that would be added to the property on the northerly side, that addition of the second floor would be set back three feet nine inches to comply with the current code. Next slide, please. So this is a picture review of the home as it, as it is now. So as you can see, the, if you can imagine the second floor being on top of this, but being set back from that street side so that it complies with the, or is consistent with the three-foot-nine-inch side setback. And if you're looking at the property in terms of mass, it would very much be very much like the house that's next to it there on the, that would be the screen to the left. Next slide, please. And this is a, the other side, the elevation view of the house, where you could see going into the alley side where you have a two-car garage. Of course, the second store would be built right above that. And next slide, please. So as part of our analysis, a CUP is required due to the parcel having a structure that is, that does not meet the setback requirements. So once again, it's just shy of that by nine inches. So the Seale Beach Municipal Code allows for improvements which involve the alteration or addition of residences that are non-conforming due to setbacks, subject to approval of the condition use permit. I'll propose, I'll propose improvements to the subject property conform to the requirements of the Seale Beach Municipal Code. And once again, the conditional use permit is required due to the parcel having a structure that does not meet setback requirements. The addition would not intensify the non-conforming setback as the addition would have a setback of the required three feet nine inches from the side property line aligned with northerly street-side setback. The proposed addition would be consistent with other residential properties and would not intensify the existing non-conformity on the property because a proposed addition would be, would meet the setback requirements for the RHD20 zone and would maintain all required setbacks. And once again, the alterations proposed are consistent with the provisions of the Seale Beach Municipal Code. Next slide. So with that, staff recommends that the Plan Commission adopt Resolution 21-14, approving condition use permit 21-4. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any commissioner comments?
I have a question. On the resolution, section five, number two, it says all plan check and future construction shall be in substantial compliance. Aren't they supposed to be in compliance?
Checking that section right now.
That page three or four.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Campbell, what number was that again, please?
Section five, number two. On page three of four. It says they're supposed to be in some substantial compliance. I thought they're supposed to be in compliance with the plans.
Commissioner Campbell, this is Barry Curtis. When the plans come in for, for building plan check, things like roof slope and things like that may need to be altered by an inch, half an inch or so, all within code standards.
Okay.
That's what that's talking about, or if it's talking about any of the exterior treatments like paint colors, things like that, those can change. It's generally consistent, but it might be little teeny tweaks that are necessary to get it through the building code.
Thank you, Barry.
Sure.
Any other commissioner comments? Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. City Clerk Harper, do we have any emailed comments?
Yes, we, six email comments were received in support of this item.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to address the commission? Is the applicant on the line? Is this one of the?
Yes, there's someone here from Senikoff Architects.
Yes, I'm on the line. I'm Steve Senikoff, Senikoff Architects. I have nothing further to say. I think Marco presented very well and I think that we are in compliance and I'm here to answer any questions.
I'm confused.
I'm sorry?
I was being facetious.
Oh.
This is Ronde Winkler.
It's a nice home. I walk by it every day when I walk to school. I look forward to what it looks like when it's done. I don't have anything. Does anybody else have anything? I'll now close the public hearing. Do we have a motion in a second? A motion to approve?
I'll second.
City Clerk Harper, can we take role, please, or vote?
Sure. Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas, do you hear the vote?
No, I'm going to stay and sing as I just joined. Thank you, though.
Perfect. Commissioner Klinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. One with Commissioner Thomas abstaining.
Thank you. Assistant, the city attorney Grayson?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Oh, this is just a time to say this is a 10-day.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's okay.
I was focused on the abstention vote.
Okay.
Yes, there is a 10-day appeal period from this decision and the appeal period starts running tomorrow.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
On to number, item C, conditional use permit 21-5 at 1709 Apollo Court. Is there a report?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Miller and Planning Commissioners. Tonight's second item is conditional use permit 21-5. Wait till the slide to catch up to me there, but. 21-5. Beautiful. Okay. So 21, conditional use permit 21-5 is to allow for an indoor recreation facility for basketball and volleyball center and to allow for the operation of a restaurant and cafe with the type 41 alcohol license to sell beer and wine in conjunction with the proposed use at 1709 Apollo Court within the Boeing Integrated Defense System or BIDS specific plan area. I'll probably say BIDS a few times tonight, so it does stand for the Boeing Integrated Defense Systems specific plan area. Next slide, please. And this is in arrow view, the property showing the site location. So the subject site is a 195, 408 square foot parcel located within the planning area two of the Boeing integrated or defense systems or BIDS specific plan and is developed with a, a one-building tenant space with two floors. The scope of work is limited to the first floor for this project and it measures 71,151 square feet in area. The second floor measures 16,351 square feet and is used as office space and is leased by a separate tenant. The subject site currently provides a total of 169 parking spaces. Next slide, please. So this is an expanded view of the Apollo Court area. As you can see, our subject site is to your left at 1709. And I will reference the other properties a little bit later on in the slide presentation. But for this location, the BIDS specific plan area permits gymnasiums and similar facilities for sports-related activities and planning areas two and three of the subject of the subject area and through approval of a conditional use permit. The BIDS specific plan area also allows for restaurant uses with onsite sale of alcoholic beverages. The concept for the BIDS specific plan land use plan was to develop, was to create a development with the mixed, a planned mixed-use business park. And the BIDS area is developed with the mix of light industrial with office and commercial uses along the northeast for the area. Next slide, please. Well, this is a site plan of the actual property itself, just focusing on the actual building itself, 1709. So as previously mentioned, the applicant proposes to utilize the existing first floor, the 71,151 square feet of tenant space manly for a proposed basketball and volleyball center. The applicant proposes to utilize 48,453 square feet of that space to create 11 volleyball courts and eight basketball courts, depending on the season. And the remaining 22,698 square feet, which would be the green shaded area, would be used as office spaces and area for various offices and shops, Pilates studio, pro shop, recovery and therapy area, in addition to the proposed restaurant. So once again, the graphic in front of you, the shaded area would represent the 22,698 square foot area and that would have the other uses other than the courts and the remaining area to the left of that would be for, for court use. So the proposed hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM Monday through Friday and Saturday and Sunday practices would typically start at 2:30 PM with the last practice commencing at approximately 8:30 PM. Next slide, please. So in this sudden, we have more of a close-up view of the, the area, the 22,000 square feet that would be used for purposes other than for court use. And with that, some of the spaces I previously mentioned would be used as office spaces in area for Pilates, a pro shop, a recovery and therapy area, and a restaurant café area. The restaurant portion would occupy the middle portion of this floor plan. And I'll get into further detail with that on the next slide. The next slide, please. Thank you. So this is a close-up of the floor plan area, just focusing on the restaurant. So the restaurant, the restaurant café area is proposed to occupy space approximately 2,700 square feet in area and would provide a limited menu of items such as sandwiches, salads, prepackaged snacks and so forth. The alcoholic beverage sold in a restaurant would, would be limited to be sold in the restaurant area and, and would only be consumed within that café area and not allowed outside of this area. The restaurant café area is intended for use only by patrons or for guests and spectators during practice and tournament events. The proposed hours of operation for the restaurant café would follow the same hours as the practice facility with the proposed alcohol service from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. Next slide, please. So on this, the photo in front of you now is, shows the, the different buildings that are located now within that facility. So the subject property is to the upper left, 1709. And next to that, at an angle would be 1708. The applicant does operate a, an existing facility at, I'm sorry, 1718 at a diagonal. So they currently operate a, as I previously mentioned, a, an existing facility at that location, but they have a smaller space to work with there. And the, the 1799 space that you see at your upper right would be the location of, of, it's a different building, but the applicant was able to secure additional parking within that facility there. So the purpose of this slide was to show the proximity of, of the, the spaces and the sites and see how they're laid out here. So someone can get an idea of, you know, incoming cars and traffic and so forth. So the applicant has stated that the proposed basketball and volleyball center would operate primarily as a practice and training facilities for local athletes and teams. AIM, the company that runs all the operations, has proposed team practices and a limited number of private training sessions as part of its weekday operations. On weekends, the facility would be made available for locally tournament games. And the facility is, would employ three full-time staff members to monitor daily operations, which will consist of a fixed schedule of team practices with periodically tournament games on weekends. Weekly team practices would be scheduled in two-hour sessions within, within a gym area. It should be, it should be mentioned that the applicant is still intent to operate the facility simultaneously with the existing facility and coordinate scheduling activities accordingly. Next slide, please. So as far as our analysis for parking, a, the parking analysis evaluated the highest peak demand for the total number of persons using the facility and parking spaces at the proposed facility. Parking spaces are required, required to support the sport activities were determined based upon the operating time schedules, number of participants, number of spectators, and basically some average vehicle rider ships. The analysis concludes that the demand for parking is lowest during weekday practices and highest when league games are played during the weekends. Should be noted that the applicant has secured access to an additional 110 parking spaces at a neighboring facility at 1799 Apollo Court, which was shown in the previous slide, for useful demand for, for demand for when parking is very high or an additional, as for additional capacity as needed during weekend tournaments. So staff is comfortable with recommending a conditional approval for the base use of weekday practice facilities. However, to ensure that there is sufficient parking provided for weekend league games and special tournaments, staff believes that additional expert analysis is required. As such, staff has included as an additional condition that is placed that would require professional parking demand loss analysis to be prepared for review and approved by the Director of Community Development prior to any tournament or special event taking place at the subject facility. And to require that any tournament or special event must comply with the requirements of the parking demand analysis. The parking demand analysis would be used to ensure that onsite parking will be sufficient to satisfy the amount of parking required by the proposed facility while not negatively impacting surrounding uses. Next slide, please. As part of the alcohol review analysis, the city does require a compliance with section 11.4.05.015, which requires approval of a CUP for each alcoholic, alcoholic beverage establishment. And along with that, Seale Beach Municipal Code also requires all new alcohol licenses to be in compliance with policy 600-1. So with that, the consumption is restricted within the restaurant area and, and with that also the, this alcohol license in particular is specific to what's called a type 41 alcohol license, which is commonly used with restaurants and authorizes the sale of beer and wine. And so it would just be for distill, I'm sorry, for a beer and wine, distilled spirits are not allowed as a part of this. And the business as part of the restaurant would still have to operate a, as a bona fide eating establishment as well, which means that the businesses must, the business must maintain suitable kitchen facilities and must, must make actual and substantial meals for consumption on the premises. Along with some of the provisions for that license is that it does allow minors within that restaurant area because obviously it's a restaurant area, so it's not exclusive just to the consumption of alcoholic beverage, but is more conducive to more like a family environment as well. Let's see. So. Find my place here. Lastly, the approval of the alcohol license also requires approval through ABC and and let's see, and this, this application has been conditioned so that there's conditions imposed, imposed on the establishment to ensure the proper service of alcohol to patrons in compliance with City Code Policy 600-1. And and I should also mention that along with compliance to 600, City Council Policy 600-1 is that one of the requirements is that it does require to be at least 100 feet from any neighboring residence. Per my calculations, there's, there's residential properties across the street to the north and then to the west. And by my calculations, we're approximately 200 feet away from those areas as well. Next slide, please. So these are photos of the, the, the structure, the building itself. So the left is the northeast entrance. That's where the athletes and so forth would walk into that entrance. And the picture to the, to the right is the north elevation. That's what you would see from the street side. And next slide, please. So for that, our recommended action is staff recommends, let me start that again. Our conclusion is that after conducting the public hearing and receiving testimony, staff recommends that the Plan Commission adopt Resolution 21-15, approving CUP 21-5 to allow an indoor recreational facility and to allow the operation of a restaurant café with the type 41 alcohol license in conjunction with the proposed use at 1709 Apollo Court. So that concludes my presentation and I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I will say the, the, since like the applicant, the applicant and their team is also intervening and would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Marco's Berry, can you also touch on the errata quickly?
Yes. Yeah, so we also have an errata or it's a memorandum with this. So this deals with change to the condition number 20 of the resolution. So number, resolution 20, I'm sorry, condition 20 of resolution 21-15 currently reads that a minimum of 169 onsite parking spaces must remain available for the basketball volleyball center and restaurants, café use. At no time may, may fees be charged for parking certain facility. As a brief overview of that, it says this condition was included to alleviate concerns regarding impacts to surrounding uses and businesses with the previous facility located at 1718 Apollo Court. To alleviate concerns regarding impacts to surrounding uses and businesses with the previous facility located at seventeen eighteen Apollo Court. Regarding parking noise and site maintenance. Um, staff is unaware of any impacts associated with the original facility since receiving approval. Um, the proposed night, condition nineteen requires the applicant, um, to prepare a parking demand analysis for review and approval by the director of community development. Prior to the occurrence of any tournament at the proposed facility. Uh, not coincidentally, tournaments are also, um, are also, um, provided when paid parking can be feasible to the operator. Uh, subject to thorough analysis of paid parking and its potential impacts through the, uh, required parking demand analysis. And the implementation of any and all recommended operational features contained therein. And to the satisfaction of direct, to the director of community development. Staff is comfortable with allowing a provision for paid parking during weekend tournaments. Therefore, staff recommends the following revision to condition number twenty of resolution twenty-one dash fifteen. Which states, a minimum of a, of a hundred and sixty-nine onsite parking spaces must remain available for the basketball volleyball center. And restaurant cafe use. Paid or fee parking is prohibited unless analyzed as a part of the parking demand analysis. And found by the director of community development to have no impacts surrounding uses. And, uh, that covers the, uh, errata, um, memorandum for this item.
Thank you. Are there any commissioner comments?
Uh, yes, I have one, I have a question, it's Commissioner Klinger here. I have a question about traffic when there's league games. Cause it's, uh, that's a narrow area, it's, you know, a short timeframe. When as many as two hundred and seventy-five are expected to attend some of the games. Um, what kind of provision do they have to examine that?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Klinger, um, um, as, as part of this, as, as part of the conditions, we did condition it that, of course. As I mentioned, that the, um, the applicant conduct the have, or have conducted a, um, a thorough traffic or parking demand analysis. But, um, also that there's, um, other conditions, um, that would, um, require the, um. The applicant to provide, um, 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 parking, like parking managers, so they'll be directing people to. You know, sure that they park in the, in the correct spot and also be directing them, um, to the areas they need to go to as well. Um, as we mentioned, there's, uh, we're not aware that, um, with their existing facility that there has been any, um, traffic issues. And going off our experience from the previous condition when you just permit allowed for this. Um, a formal traffic analysis, um, was not done. Um, at this time, we didn't feel that one was needed for, for this particular location, just because of. Um, where it's located and, and also, um, because it's, it's, it's more of a, of a. It's more to the far right of that, um, facility, which, um, which gives it more space and a little bit more, um. Uh, more, more, um, how to say, more and more exclusively, if you will, that, um. That they'll park in those areas and not create backups and, and, um, be tempted to park in other areas other than where they're supposed to.
Does, does that mean that they are, are already having those kinds of, uh, traffic coming for games already? You know, when you're, I'm talking about, you know, the possibility of lining up out there on Westminster.
Um, my understanding was that, um, there are tournaments, um, held, um, every so often at the existing facility. Um, I think the, um, the applicant can probably, uh, fill, fill your, and, and just on a little bit more detail than that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't mind, um, commenting if you, if you need me to, Commissioner.
I have some questions.
So, uh, and, and my name is Billy, um, I'm the director at AIM, so we've been operating in this, uh. Uh, in the, in, in the Boeing Business Park here for just about seven years. Um, with, you know, but just about a tournament every weekend and, um. Um, I think one of the, you know, we, and without any traffic concerns, I think one of the, one of the benefits of our business model is. Um, we oper, most of our operation, operating hours are outside of regular business hours in the business park. Um, and I think with, um, um, especially the traffic flows coming in from Westminster and the way that the. The, the traffic light there is, is timed, we, we've never seen any, any kind of issues coming in off of Westminster.
And you already have, uh, that kind of a, uh, an attendance up to two hundred or three hundred people?
I wouldn't say that we're, uh, we're to that level, um, um. Uh, but I think also one of the benefits that we're gonna have. With the seventeen oh nine property is that there's a specific entrance coming in from Westminster. Uh, versus having to enter from, um, Apollo. So you can actually get to the seventeen oh nine address directly from Westminster versus having to turn in on Apollo. Um, and come down to the cul-de-sac.
Okay, thank you.
Billy, what, what, uh, what percentage of your business is non-business hours? I run through there a lot and I've seen like your guys' games, traffic does not exist on Westminster on weekends, especially in this area. It's, there's hardly any cars out, so I don't. I, I know that, and I know in the evenings, it's like after Boeing shuts down, it's the same, but what percent of your business is after like your standard nine to five business hours?
Uh, I would say ninety percent of our business is after, that's regular business hour, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I have some questions, um. There's, there's the original basketball location, have they ever had any problems with that other location?
Um, yes, Commissioner Campbell, um, I did, um, uh, reach out to the police department, uh, just to ensure if there's been any complaints. Of any sorts, um, any issues even with traffic, and they have indicated that they have, there has not been any incidences of, of such. So, um, to that I'd have to say no, but, um, um, yeah, there's just none that, that we're aware of at this point.
Okay, because, uh, one of the, uh, section five twenty-five. It said, uh, staff must routinely patrol the parking lot and discourage groups loitering in the parking lot before and after the events. Is that currently being done with that, uh, first basketball facility?
Uh, yes. To our knowledge, it is, it is being done, um, I'll, I'll let the, um, um, the applicant, um, speak on behalf of that, but once again, that was, um. That was an original, um, um, condition that was carried over from the, um, the, the police department. That we decided to, to put into this condition as well for good measure.
Okay, um, now, you, is this gonna be on the first floor of this building, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, what is the height of that room where you're gonna have the basketball, uh, games? Or the practices, what is the height? I'm curious, because whenever I see a basketball game, it's in a place like Madison Square Garden or something like that. And obviously, height is not an issue in a facility like that. I was just curious as to if they're playing basketball, what kind of a height do you need?
So I, I believe the ceilings, um, are, uh, are thirty-two to thirty-five feet at seventeen oh nine, um. Um, within that range, and for us, the height is more important for volleyball. Um, um, when you're, when you have a high level volleyball going on. You want, um, especially boys volleyball, you want a lot more, um, room to work with. Uh, basketball, not as important, but for volleyball, it is, uh, much more important.
Well, I've seen some of the basketball players toss a ball almost all the way to the other end of the court, you've gotta get some height for that. So it's about thirty-two to thirty-five feet, is that where yours is gonna be?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, now, staff recommended additional traffic study, um, when do you expect to have that done by?
Commissioner Campbell, um, we're actually recommending a parking analysis. Um, and it'll be as quick as, you know, the applicant can answer how quickly they think that can get turned around.
Yeah, so we already spar, we already started speaking with, um, the group that, uh, that did our previous, uh, parking demand analysis. Um, and so hopefully they can, um, they can, uh, get that process started for us pretty quickly and we can have that back over to. Uh, the new, uh, community development director within the next month.
Okay. Okay, now it says there's a parking monitor for the other site to be sure patrons park where they should, um. Are you gonna have one?
Yes, ma'am, and we, and we have that person every weekend, so. Uh, I think for us, and of course, as, as Marco mentioned, one of the previous conditions, um, as, when we were first. Getting started here was that we be a good neighbor and, and supply that person, um. And, and we still maintain that, we wanna be a great neighbor in this business park, uh, this business park has been great to us. Um, it's a very, uh, family, you know, community here and we, we like to take care of each other and. Um, so that is one thing that we will continue and, and, uh, we wanna make sure that. That every other business in this business park feels good about having us here and. Knows that we're taking care of their, their businesses when they are not here, um, while we operate.
Okay, um, it says under section five twenty-seven, parking monitor there at least twenty minutes before the games. How long does the parking monitor have to stay there, you've got a start time, but how long does he have to stay there, what's his?
Yes, so we, we actually have that, we actually have that staff member in shift, so we kind of, we kind of divvy up those shifts. Um, so that it's not the same person throughout the day. Um, so, just so you're aware, if, if we have, um, if we have an eight A M. start time on a Saturday. Um, uh, for league matches, we usually have somebody here by six thirty or seven. Um, uh, not only to set up cones to prevent cars from going to other lots. Uh, but also to, to continue to monitor and make sure that, that patrons are parking in the correct spot. That we're picking up, um, uh, any trash or anything that's coming, uh, from vehicles. Um, so it's, it's, it's a multi, it's a multi-use position, it's not just making sure that people are parking in the, in the correct place. But also making sure that, um, that we're keeping the community here clean and, and that everything is flowing, uh, smoothly.
Okay, it's great, thank you, I don't have any more questions.
Uh, this is Rondi Winkler, I have a few. Uh, the first is, I am, I'm rather surprised that you'd already had a similar facility here. Cause I hadn't heard anything about it, uh, but I don't have any children right now either. Uh, so, how long was the, how long has the first? Uh, facility been in action?
So I think, I believe our first C U P was approved in twenty fourteen.
Okay, and so you started operating around that time?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know that from comments that I, I made with friends, that they said this kind of facility is so needed. Because of this time to practice and they're hard to find at a reasonable cost. I have no objections to this.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chair Miller, uh, this Commissioner Thomas, can I ask a question?
Yes, please, go for it.
Okay, um, uh, yeah, my question is, um. So now, um, so you're gonna keep both, uh, I mean, I'm, I think I heard this, but. Uh, and this is a question for the applicant, you're gonna keep both, uh, facilities in operation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, yeah, and so you can have bigger events, more courts, more, you know, you can have bigger tournaments, that kind of thing. And, um, anyone who's had kids who've done club sports knows, these things are crazy. Um, but, uh, no, I, I, I like the facility there, I've been to it, it's, uh, uh, it's all right. Let me ask this question, my question is more, um, administrative, and that is, uh, by. Approving this, um, this C U P. So we're giving an approval that includes that there will be a subsequent. Parking analysis that we're going to allow staff to review and, uh, and, and to make judgment on. Is that a true statement?
Commissioner Thomas, that is, uh, the recommendation of staff, correct?
Okay, so let me ask this is, so if, uh, if, if a, if a parking analysis is submitted and, you know. Staff finds it lacking. Um, do you send, uh, I mean, do, does that kill the project or do you? Do you send, uh, the applicant back to sharpen their pencil or explain to me how that works?
Commissioner Thomas, we would work very closely with the applicants and their consultant to ensure that, um, that it was resolved. If there was no resolution, um, one of two things could happen, they could not do the tournaments, I, I don't foresee that. Being a, a result, um, or we could come back to the commission for further consideration.
And the standard you're using to make that determination is just kind of general planning and engineering practice and. Meeting whatever the current codes and, and requirements are?
That's correct, it, it'll be, you know, it'll, it'll be a professional firm that does parking analyses, staff, um. And public works employee, employees as well, will take a look at that based on, on planning and, um, parking practices and make that determination. Whether or not we agree with the findings of the consultants.
No.
If we have, if you can refine it with the consultant until it's resolved.
All right, all right, very good, um, okay, uh, that's fine, I have no more questions, thank you, uh, Chairman.
I have another one, um, is it possible for us to know, uh, how that analysis works out? If, even if, if, if you find it or you approve it, can we know about that?
Absolutely, Commissioner, we will, um, provide that to the commission, um, before we take that action, so you're aware of it. I should say when we take that action, so you're aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the parking while we're there, is, is that just weekend analysis, is that right?
That, that's correct.
That's, that's unusual to me, just because I've, I've run through there so many times, I don't see any cars in there besides. Uh, besides those at AIM, and also I noticed that when I go through, a lot of people get dropped off. Is that gonna be taken into consideration?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, all that will get taken into consideration, and as I indicated, I don't expect there to be issues.
Okay.
Uh, the, the problem is, it was analyzed with the initial, um, site. Um, and just in the, in the abundance of caution, because we're essentially doubling. You know, between the two facilities, doubling the size of potential events, we wanna make sure that. For some reason, that doesn't result in just a doubling, more than just a doubling of the, the impacts, I, I don't expect that to be the case, we just wanna make sure that's the case.
Sounds good, thank you. Any other comments? City Clerk Harper, do we have any, uh, emailed comments?
No email comments, um, for this item.
Applicant, are you good to move on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, uh, I'll now close the public hearing, do we have a motion in a second?
I move to approve, Commissioner Thomas.
I'll second it, Commissioner Klinger.
May I vote, my roll call, please?
Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Winkler, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
Thank you, Assistant City Attorney Grayson?
Yes, this is a ten-day appeal period from this decision, the appeal period starts running tomorrow.
Thank you. Good luck with your business.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there a director's report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, quickly, at your last meeting, I indicated that, um. A new director been selected, I, I'm not sure how much any of you have heard, but I just wanted to report out on that quickly. The new director, um, is Alexa Smidell, she is currently the director of community development for the city of Westminster. She has extensive experience, um, working with similar department to the cities. And, um, as well as, is a lot of work over her career in economic development type of, of, uh, projects. She lives, I'll let her introduce herself when the time comes, but she basically, she lives locally, um, in Huntington Beach with her family and is invested in the, the. General local community here, um, I think that she's, uh, was a great selection by the city manager, I think she'll serve the city, um, and the department wonderfully. So I, I think that's something to be excited about for both the commission and the city and, and the department. Um, so I'll let you know that, and then just reporting back on one, one thing, uh, this will be my last meeting with the commission. And I wanted to get back to, uh, an issue that Commissioner Thomas raised a couple meetings ago. Regarding, um, building heights in the trailer park. Um, this is what we found, I, I have a suggestion, um, and I, and I'm. Will be looking for the commission to give us further direction, how you want us to proceed, but, um, what we found is the trailer park, um. Gosh darn it, when I was here before, it was Silby Trailer Park, um, Silby Shores. Um, basically has a twenty-five foot height limit in there, which matches. Virtually all of the rest of the city's residential areas, surfside being allowed to be a little bit taller. virtually all of the rest of the city's residential areas. Surfside being allowed to be a little bit taller. And, um, I believe up at Rossmore, um, behind shops at Rossmore, um, I, I think the high density there's allowed to be a little bit higher, but everywhere else in the city, Old Town, The Hill, College Park East, College Park West, um, are all required to be, uh, no more than twenty-five feet in height. So staff's recommendation, I guess we look back and about twelve years ago, thirteen years ago now, the city, the city, including, uh, through the city council, went through and looked at height limits. It's contentious area in a beach, contentious issue in a beach community, um, looked at that and determined to set this kind of uniform height limit i- in the city. Staff wouldn't recommend creating a separate height limit that was different for Seal Beach Shores. We think that it should be consistent with the rest of the residential areas. I don't know that I, from a professional, you know, opinion, I don't know that I would have a problem if the city was to consider raising those height limits, but it's been a contentious issue in the past. And, and we certainly wouldn't recommend changing the height limit in Seal Beach Shores without changing it in those other areas of the city. So staff recommendation is gonna be that, that you let staff respond back to that, that resident and advise them of such. However, if the, the commission wants to consider this item and making a recommendation to city council, we can agenda, agendaize it for further discussion.
Yeah, this is, uh, Commissioner Thomas. Um, oh, I'm sorry, do you have something to say?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say that would be a fun topic to, to take on.
Well, let, let, let me say, yeah, this is Commissioner Thomas. Uh, let me say, I, I, uh, I agree. I, I agree that, uh, we, uh, would not want to increase the height limit everywhere. I guess my, my question is just by the, um, just by the nature of construction of mobile homes. Uh, and that, and that's the whole argument here is that, you know, they don't sit on the ground, they sit raised up. And, uh, by that nature, um, can, uh, you know, can, can be driven above that twenty-five foot limit, uh, which, which my question is, so you're, you're saying by your analysis, you don't see that as a un, you know, kind of a unreasonable hardship or something like that? I guess, I guess I'm asking you to elaborate, what, why the whole city, i- if we're just looking at a specific type of construction that's only allowed in a specific area, why didn't you choose to kind of look at it that way?
For sure, we, you could look at it that way. I guess that'd be the first thing. What we considered in looking at this, though, is creating a separate, um, higher standard for homes within that area as opposed to the rest of the city and concerns that other areas would feel they should be able to do that as well. So I, I think that was the equity was kind of the reason that we went the way we went on our recommendation. Doesn't oblige the commission to go that way, um, in, in making recommendations to the council, however. In that area, as you know, there's the, the two-story structures that get built. Um, frequently, just a little bit of those are the trailer and the rest of it's built sort of as, as a single-family construction. And with, with, um, if it was built as like a modular structure that was put in there as two stories, there are standards in the building code as far as having to, where you set that elevation measurement from, if it needs to be raised up because of floodish flooding issues, things like that. There are issues where, where we actually determined to start that, um, start that measurement from. So they, they're really not in a worse position for the most part than anyone else in, in the city is. Um, but it's, our recommendation really has more to do with equity and concerns from other parts of the city. If we were to allow higher, higher house limits in there, what, what they're trying to get is get away from the standard eight-foot floor plates, which, you know, I, I, I understand that desire. It's, it's kind of an old-school floor plate. And, you know, most newer homes are built with a nine or even ten-foot floor plate or more, if you can get away with it. Um, but within twenty-five foot height, even like the house that we looked at earlier this evening, they wouldn't be able to get, it would be very difficult for them with a hip roof to get anything more than an eight-foot floor plate in that new, that addition to that single-family house on Seventeenth Street.
Well, I- Chair, can I just add one comment on this issue? I don't believe I was at the meeting where you may have discussed this question, but there's also an issue of state preemption that we would have to look at if we're talking about height limits inside a mobile home park in the city as opposed to constructing a single manufactured home on a single lot in the city. So that is just something we would need to look at because of the special state statutes and regulations that deal with mobile home parks, including their construction.
Not all homes in the trailer park are built on trailers. In some cases, they, first of all, they don't own the individual lots, they're, they lease them. But there are some homes, mobile homes that are moved in and they are not put on trailers. They're just moved in.
Yeah, I understand that. I, I guess I was thinking about manufactured homes. You know, I, I wanna be careful because this isn't like an agendized item or anything like that. So, yeah, um, yeah. Can, can I ask this? Can I ask this is that, can we, can we ask for kind of, um, you know, I don't, I, I guess, um, I, I, I can't, because again, this isn't agendized. So I wanna be very careful here, but, but I think this warrants maybe a little more than just kind of a, we think that it's, we recommend not doing it, uh, because of consistency with other parts of the community. Seems like it, it's a little deeper than that.
You could ask that it be brought back, um, have staff come back with an item on the agenda, reporting on what, what was found.
I think, I think I'd like that. I think I'd like to see something, uh, in, in writing. Can it, can I just ask for that? Uh, Assistant, uh, City Attorney Grayson?
Yeah, you can, you can certainly request that an item be scheduled on the agenda at a future meeting. Uh, again, I, I'm not completely sure what the issue was, but yes, that would, that would ensure that you would be able to talk about, you know, an item properly agendized so that there would no, not be any Brown Act issue, even that, you know, if it's done as a report without, you know, depending on, on how staff decides the best approach to present it to you.
Sure, and then, and that would allow folks to chime in both, you know, for and against the, the issue, right? In a, in a, in a public air, in a public arena and-
Yes.
Give that chance to, to figure out what, what people in the community will, uh, want and believe.
I- if it's on the agenda, anybody can speak on it, um, through public comment. That's correct.
Um, well, I, I think I'd like that rather than just kind of throwing it, you know, saying, well, it's a bad idea because it's inconsistent. And, and that may be true, by the way. Um, I, I, I don't know.
Have you had a request from someone in the trailer park to, uh, alter the height limit?
Yeah, uh, yes, I've heard from my constituents that, uh, that, that they believe that the, uh, uh, some of them believe that the height limit, uh, unreasonably restricts them from being able to build a modern manufactured home.
And they'll go to, a lot of them go two stories.
No, I understand. The, the, the issue, um, Commissioner Campbell, was that, that, in order to get like standard walls, uh, to a standard, today's standard height, they, they need about somewhere between, I think it was between fifteen and twenty extra inches above twenty-five feet in order to do that.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna suggest, because the issue has been raised about Brown Act, that we not have any further discussion and that if you would like this item brought back, then you would be able to more, you know, fully discuss and, and give any other appropriate direction as you might deem.
Yeah, thank you, Amy. I, I think that's, I think that's correct. I think what I, what I'm asking is, and I'm not sure if this requires a motion or, or if it were, you know, or what it requires. However, what I think it makes sense is for a future meeting, uh, for staff to present, uh, you know, uh, kind of a general response to, uh, a letter that we received from a member of the community, um, that, uh, I, I'm not sure how that was submitted through Planning Department, but it's kind of a response to that letter for Planning Commission to consider recommending a change to the development standard.
I don't think you, I don't think you should take any action. I think you, you have made your view known and I think that come, the staff can go from there. That would be my recommendation. It is not an agendized action item and you've requested to staff that it be brought back.
Amy, you have, you have, you have said what I would like perfectly, so.
I'm trying.
That, that, that I'm, that, that, that's really what, uh, what I think I would like. That's what I'd like. Is for a future agenda item to be able to discuss this. Staff could do that.
Can I ask you who wrote that letter?
Um, yes, absolutely. Uh, Lynn, gosh darn, Lynn Larson? I don't know what name she used because she uses different names. Uh, Alfery, her name is Lynn Alfery and she lives in the, she lives in the-
What is her name again?
Lynn Alfery. And she is a very, uh, she's a, a very, uh, important community member, very interested in the, uh, the health and livelihood of Seal Beach and, uh, and a friend of mine.
Okay, Lynn Alferia. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas.
Okay.
I'd be interested to hear what the, uh, the community of Seal Beach Shores has to say about this.
And the greater community, for that matter.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, about twenty years ago, when, um, Richard Hall bought the trailer park and we had all that big hustle over it. Um, Paul Yost and I were on a subcommittee of two and we worked with the people over in the trailer park to, uh, get them a bond funding so that they could take the park back and eventually pay it off. And, uh, so I got very involved in it and it was, uh, it's very interesting. Made some good friends.
I think they only have like ten more years, right?
Sorry, what?
I think they have like ten more years of that bond funding to, to get it back.
Uh, well, I think they've got more because they did some, um, they did some refunding of it. And, uh, that cost them time, so it got extended.
This is Rondi Winkler again. This is not an agendized item. I'm a little puzzled why we're taking so much time talking about it.
Good question. I'm through talking about it.
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, staff will come back at a, a subcommittee with that information.
Thank you. I have one, uh, comment. On the last comment on the emailed comments is, brings up, it's, uh, from Stacy Browning. And she brings up something that I've talked, I talked to, uh, Director Johnson about a number of times, about expediting some of these, uh, CUPs, these MUPs, these requests that are kind of like, um, I, I, I think what she says in here as far as like, when it's a case-by-case basis, it makes people hesitant to, to say, yes, we're for it because maybe when they go to do it, it gets turned down for a reason or another. Has there been any more further conversations about moving these along without bringing these to these, uh, meetings?
Mr. Chairman, is the, is the question to relook at what requires hearings?
Yes. Yes, like what you, like what you guys would just approve, like, you know, Marco does his analysis and you guys say, yes, this is good. I mean, I know it's not three feet, nine inches, but it's three feet and everybody knows it's, well, not everybody knows. More than likely, it's gonna get approved. That's the question.
So, um, Mr. Mr. Chairman, that, that is absolutely, that, that's a very good question. Um, I was unaware that there, there was an issue with it. It's, I think, I apologize, but when, when, uh, Mr. Johnson and I traded hats, um, I, that was an issue I was not aware of. Um, but that is something, we're, we're looking at putting together a number of code cleanup items that are more somewhat, some of them are larger, some are smaller, but one could absolutely be to relook at what requires discretionary approval and, and even set up some performance standards that if it meets these, it's okay, you know, need to come to the commission. For instance, as, as you pointed out on this one, i- it, it's only minimally out of compliance with the code and the addition itself is fully in compliance with the code. Things like that could be, you know, staff-level approvals or staff has the authority to approve it, but sends out something to the commission in advance of doing that. The commission can call it up before it goes final. Um, I will pass that on to Alexa is something to consider for the code cleanup. Um, because it, it's, it's wise for the city to periodically relook at what requires discretionary approvals because times change, people's attitudes change. Um, what used to be super important may not be that important anymore. So it's good to relook at those things periodically.
Thank you. I enjoy hearing these things. I, I like, I like to learn. I mean, this is how we learn and all that good stuff. But I think as an applicant, I'm sure they would love to get their answer a lot quicker. And I think that benefits everybody. But, so thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other commissioner comments?
Well, I, this Commissioner Thomas, I, I do think it's appropriate to, uh, thank, uh, interim director Curtis for, uh, stepping in, uh, in short notice and, uh, shepherding us through the past, uh, couple of months. I want you to know, Barry, I, I appreciate it very much. And, uh, um, uh, and, uh, we'll miss you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Barry, wish you well. Sorry, we didn't see more of you. Uh, it was interesting for you to come back a second time because when I first got on the Planning Commission, you were within the planning staff. Back in ninety-three.
Yeah, because we're getting old is what you're saying.
That's when we worked, first worked together. So it's good having you back.
Thank you. Me too.
I, I, I agree with those sentiments. Thank you for everything.
Thanks.
If that's it, then I'll adjourn the planning commission. We need to Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one at seven PM. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Night.